Okay, it's been called order and the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is in black, the United States of America. To the people of America, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all. And we don't have minutes to move tonight. So we'll be right into a group of people.
Hi, I'm Andrea Tisitou. I am celebrating my silver anniversary with the district as you approach your art project. And I'm thrilled to be in that position. So I'm sorry, I have about eighteen slides, so those are fast. I started the year with just fundamentals of art with the kids. And I wanted to start with line because that would give us an opportunity not only to talk about artwork that we were making, but talk about artwork we were seeing. And I thought the best way to do that was to drop from live models. So we used worms. And then in doing that, if the kids didn't feel like their artwork was successful, well, of course, not the worm moved. So that was a nice entry point for them. And as with any of the subject areas that present to you, you're going to see different developmental levels in every classroom. And this is kind of a sample. It's kind of a pre-test. The worms also worked to my advantage to let me know where the kids were at for starting point. This is where our first graders were in September. And this is where our kindergartners are in March, withdrawing snakes, working on pattern. We also did line in the older grades. But I introduced it with a new medium for them. They used pen and ink for the first time and integrated a lot of geometry language, perpendicular and parallel angles, as a way for them to explore the new medium and have a crossover to the math. That same line work, this is an example from first grade. Our next step was to do a little bit of art history, looking at Mondrian's use of line to create shapes, namely squares and rectangles. And in doing so, we talked about the attributes of those shapes. The older children used that line to design a portion of a fraction and then repeated that using graphite transfer technique to complete the full circle. And again, this gave us an opportunity to talk about rotational balance and other types of symmetry than they had been exposed to before. But again, still crossing over into some of that math language. We also pulled in some ELA with having the children write artist statements. One of the classes was able to do that. And I hope to be able to pull that into some other classes as well. You'll notice on the slide I spelled SMART because I'm not a STEM teacher. I'm not a scheme teacher, but I do present a SMART program for the children. The S representing crossovers with science and social studies, M for math. But the primary foundation has to be on those elements and principles of art. We copied a famous work from Helma Ott Klint. And in doing so, there was an opportunity to do some measuring to create a perimeter frame around the piece. And those pieces are very guided, but actually completing the center design of the work was a problem-solving piece. The kids had to find cylinders, circles, things in the classroom that they could use to represent the proportion of that shape. And my primary focus of the teaching in that lesson was brushwork and techniques and care of materials, but it was more about the problem solving. Andre Matisse was a major unit that we did in the beginning of the year. It was an excellent venue for getting back into scissor safety and scissor skills with our little ones who have been at home and doing some online learning and had less, possibly less experience with those. And at Open House, several of the parents that spoke to me said that their kids loved art, but they were very unsure of themselves. They were very hesitant, very self-conscious about their work. So I've been doing a lot of abstract because it's not going to look exactly like the tree in front of me, and that's fabulous, and that's art. So it's really freeing up those children who might be a little bit more reserved. This also tied in nicely to my standards about responding to art because even our kindergartners could pick their favorite piece from Matisse. And I aligned the unit with right around voting time so the children had something meaningful to have a voting experience about as well. And we do have PLP, but sometimes the best ideas come out of five minutes. This was a project that came out of the Christmas party and a five-minute conversation with Miss Rover. Hey, what are you doing in your class? I'm doing this great BLA thing. I've got a project for that. I can connect my art standards to what you're already doing. So sometimes those great connections only take five minutes. And you'll hear more about this project because it actually connected over to the high school as well. So you'll hear about that next month. The standards for my students repeat the word explore and experiment a lot. So they're trying different mediums. They're trying different experiences. They don't necessarily know what's going to happen, how the paint's going to move. If they fold their paper up, if they fold it, if they have these different impacts on it. And so I use a lot of open-ended questioning to prompt them forward. There's a big emphasis in my classroom of process over product. So in this one, you see that the polar bears are cut out. In general, though, it's much more free-form. They're all going to come home looking different. But I chose these slides because I wanted you to see these two little girls. One is approaching finger painting with one finger, and the other one's rubbing it together and having a great time. So they're all coming at that experience from a different place. And they're playing with those two colors as they blend them. And then when we pull off the polar bear, there's that wow. There's like magically a spot that's not painted. So they're learning and experiencing with negative space. And I introduced the language, even though I'm not expecting them to retain and use that. And a lot of times the projects that you see coming home, there's going to be a lot more to it than meets the eye. So this was an example from Snowy Day. And most of the artwork they're exposed to is going to be in the form of books. It's going to be those illustrations. So we're making those connections to literature. And to make this piece, they had to recall a scene or an event in the book that they intended to try to recreate through their art. This particular one did involve using a tracer, which for them is a two-handed process. They get so natural to all of us that they have to hold something, stabilize it, and then cross midline with their other hand to trace the backside of one of the images. And crossing midline carries over into their ELA work for visual tracking as their reading. And this also incorporated some new experiences. There was a little bit of finger painting in it. And they're also painting with forks to see what kind of snow they could generate with a kind of a non-traditional material. This simple coloring page went home. Some of the children had time to collage it as well. But this was actually based on an art history lesson that was timed around President's Day. And my standards have always reflecting back to art creating, presenting, responding, and connecting. And I saw an opportunity to connect social studies and art history with responding. So from the official White House portrait gallery, I showed the children all the presidents, asked them what they saw in common, very open-ended questions. They saw a lot of similarities in how the presidents were dressed, how they carried themselves, and their posture, the colors that were used. And then I showed you this one. And without knowing the history or necessarily even all the president's names, definitely not the artist's names, they knew the power of that piece. They understood the difference that this president was represented in different colors. There were different emotions that came from that, his posture's different. And they could pick up on all of that emotion from a piece. So that's a little quick overview of what's happening in our elementary school.
Well, I just want to say this is you've transitioned great over the years and you're really seeing to really embrace this art. And it's nice to see your enthusiasm after your silver anniversary. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to have you today. I'm sure that you're trusting me with the program. Thank you.
For me, I thought it was a great presentation. I liked the integration of curriculum into your art classes. Question I have is, at the elementary level, would it be beneficial to take kids out of the classroom into the field, on field trips, et cetera?
I've thought about that because we have a lot of really incredible things available to us locally. Art Online, of course, Awana, Cole. I've thought a great deal about that. I would like to do that, but it would be a few years down the road because I need to have a better sense of the foundation skills that they have so before I could introduce a unit to what I would say probably the fourth graders on the Hudson River School to really take advantage of that and start building some, like our kindergartners and first graders were working with these little foam things that stick together to start to build some structural sculpture ideas before we'd be ready to go to art. I really appreciate what we were seeing in the work that I'm doing.
I would just like to say, as a parent of someone that went into the art field and I believe you had her in first grade, you were amazing then and you did a lot of integrated activities back then. Still, I still have the baby pink one made out of paper bag. And I just wanted to say, like, I love all of the ways that you are bringing different elements and different, just different perspectives and like recognizing all of the curriculum areas that are, it's so important, and I'm so glad that you're doing it.
Thank you so much.
And I was down at the opening today of the art show and to see and hear the families who were explaining to their parents what they have been doing and are very proud of their work. So it was good to see. And congratulations on your first opening.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you for the pictures of the kids. That's a great picture. Answer for finger. So we'll look forward to twenty-five more years of the part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So last week, we met and discussed the budget, rate length, the updates that we're at. So for today, we're just going to highlight a couple of those things that we talked about. Primarily, the expected or anticipated expenditures were just north of thirty-six point zero three billion dollars. Anticipated revenues come in around thirty-four point seven million dollars, which leaves us with a current budget gap of about one point two million dollars. And that is utilized in the current taxable tax cap. Things this morning, we should have our health insurance rates by March twenty-ninth, which is a weekday, so it's Tuesday. So that will impact the expenditure side of our budget. I am happy to say that the majority of the budget has been built at this point. There's a couple of things still that I have to fine-tune and actually get to. And then just looking in years past, the board has heard about the big five, which are special ed, salary, health, dental insurance, retirement, transportation. They do still maintain about eighty-two percent of our. That's a quick summary of what I shared with you guys in the form of a PowerPoint. Budgets.
I know that with our meeting with you and Randy and the Budget Addup Committee, there's a number of staff members and new staff positions included in the budget. One being for the Fiscal Education Department. And after that meeting, I got thinking a little bit that I know we're adding, we're looking to add staff to the Fiscal Education Department. I love all the things that the department wants to do with extra staff and weightlifting, etc. But on the other side of it, I'm thinking for years, we talked about adding more staff to our instrumental music department. So I just want to plant that seed as something to help us forward, consider moving forward. Let's minimize that a little bit so we can get some balance. Just might throw that out there.
So you have a plan to close it on two million dollars.
The biggest thing is I need to take the information as it's given to us. So once we get those figures, we do anticipate that we'll close that expenditure side of the budget by how much we don't know yet. So with that, we can, we can work on getting that done. We've got supply lines to get through yet. And then the other thing that I started doing as well in developing and building a budget is really looking at a five-year average of what have we spent on certain budget lines versus what did we budget for. Because I think an average is helpful, but I also think it's helpful to consider what schools and New York City Metro would be to ask for that matter of the past two years. So taking a number out of nineteen-twenty, I don't think it'd be the most advantageous for anybody just because it was a, it's called a two-thirds of the school year as far as us being here in person. So our operating costs will probably live the longer. So these are all things that kind of go in the back of my head or go on in, I should say, as I'm looking over averages, what we spent, what we budgeted, and then finding out where we're agreeing with our budget and where we've been in the red with our budget as far as expenditures versus your whole budget.
And the state figures are from that donkey because it has to go through the legislature, whoever has assembly and sentence. Do you have any sense of that?
I'm going to talk about the other day, but just, we're always optimistic that this assembly will give us more state aid than the governor proposed. I'm not seeing that in any of the moves things that they basically disagreed with governors. For CA, we got the minimum three percent increase in state foundation aid. So many schools have got less, less districts got double-digit foundation aid increases depending on how much they're still owed. So optimistic of that. Make some phone calls, manage, see to our elected officials here in the next week or two. Provide them with that. Like I said, there's a budget supposed to be done April first as well. So we have a budget workshop on April seventh. So then we should have all our numbers of that. So we have to come in with proposals that's, you know, balanced.
And you're trying to hit our tax cap, which is pretty high, right, this year?
Or the last year, yes.
And you're trying to go that high?
So these, we're not trying to, but the numbers that you do see that you saw in the presentation that I shared with you, those do reflect a must-maximize on the tax cap.
And what's that tax cap?
Four point three four.
So on April seventh, you'll have figures. I'd say we'll have to try and be able to get.
So we've been past the budget. Assuming that, again, by the twenty-ninth of this month, we will have our insurance.
Certainly, I think you're thinking that because the tax cap is the maximum, doesn't mean that we have to go to the max. But, you know, if there's a way.
Well, it's frankly, it's my only number basis to go off right now is the only hard number that I have to work with. So yeah, it's like doing math without a means to an end in a math class. You know, if that's the number that I have to work off of, that's where these numbers are reflected from because it's the only concrete number that I currently have that was calculated using the states.
So we're open to, you know, if there are ways to not have to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I just, I just want to explain why I chose to use that number versus anything else. I have, there is nothing else right now. There is the tax cap and.
The governors.
And then, you know, once we hit that ceiling, you know where we can go versus.
Ava, is this CD concert? Could you repeat it for us, Mr. Miller? It's very, very, some of us got a chance to stop in there. It was very beautiful. Thank you so much.
It was the first time we were in that space in two years, first of all, to the date. So it was wonderful to have everyone back in that shared space and to have the forerunners. You know, they're the top kids in the building.
Yeah. And all the parents, yeah?
All the parents.
Nice. So the date, is that March twelfth? I know you probably have, what's the two-year date that we?
Today.
Today.
All right.
I think the teachers came in the seventeenth and the eighteenth.
Thank goodness, that's the past. All right. So to follow up on previous meeting, you have some information.
Share with the board and staff everybody just, so last week, things have changed when it comes to COVID protocols, in regards to masks, the optional out in schools and all of that's in schools. So you still see a decent percentage of kids and staff still wearing masks, if that's fine. What I think has been good is there hasn't been, as far as I know, no teasing or anything like that of people wearing masks. We're not wearing masks, you know, in both regards. That's just because they're respecting everyone's choice in that regard. Food service, because it had been working fairly well. We're pretty much doing the same thing as far as grab and go breakfast at this point just to get through the year. At least that we can reassess at the end of the year in that regard. Certainly, there's increased accounts for that as far as breakfast goes. The cafeterias are set up for, by the way, I said more socialization. We have lots of individual desks in the high school, middle school. I think there's still some here, right?
There's a.
Yeah, because some of the kids, you know, they feel like just to have their own desks and stuff at the table. So we've got some in there, cafeteria for that. Cleaning, just in fact, we're still doing that. That doesn't certainly hurt to do that. Seating classrooms, we're back with some roof work and things like that in the elementary. They have the carpets back, reading group tables and such like that. The gallery of all that has been placed back in elementary rooms. You know, keeping kids apart if we can, there's, I don't know, do some things together now as well. You know, this, the protocols, this is Dyer's, our COVID coordinator, you know, as far as when kids or anybody still tests positive, they still have to stay home. Then they come back for days six feet apart. So we're masked, that's the state regulation on that. We have to come out of isolation. So that's recommended if you're exposed, just to wear a mask too as well. So those are kind of what we were going on with anyway. So that's been some of the major changes that have taken place. As I mentioned, right, it's the first time in two years she's got a concert in her building. So that was just a thing. And I know I talked to her at the end of the day about kids going to the desk rearranged, you know, not in that six-feet-apart desk, you know, arranged anymore. Some kids are liking that as well. And having to relearn how to work in partner groups as well. So that's an okay thing. Also, follow up from the last meeting, you know, we have a parent with concerns about our technology's filtering system. So tech services and Nicole and her crew have been working really with her directly on her concerns, and I think that's still ongoing in that regard because she's wondering if people can get around our filtering system and such like that. So that's an ongoing conversation. And the parents have been cooperative in that regard, saying, oh, it's a blind seating, you know, so it's dynamic, it's just decide if I can help the other understand what we're doing in that regard.
I have a question. On COVID protocols, what is our testing policy now for staff?
Testing?
Yeah, like, is it optional now or is it still?
It's up today for unvaccinated employees.
Anybody.
Unvaccinated employees are still required to get tested once a week at state. It's up today. There are some conversations about that changing quickly. I think it's a county decision. Yeah, so we're waiting on that.
Because I don't think at art school we test for a vaccine unless they want to be tested. I believe.
Oh, there's some conversations with the county, colleagues, because we're kind of doing this reading level, that was breakdancing, talking about that today when we're at health. People have told me you can stop, you got to stop. Test kits are available for anybody who needs one. Actually, I had them out at the Drama Club production last weekend, and a lot were taken. It was just better than us. Very famous, we didn't want to lose them. We got plenty more test kits. Any other things?
Thank you. Committee reports. You all got the update in your packet that looks like this. And I just want to read it for the members that are home listening in. Innovation Committee, the Task Force for Enrollment Trends and Impact on Distribution of Resources met on March seventh. During this session, a large number of ideas for what they would like to see happening in our schools was created. That list can be found on our website. The Innovation Committee met later and discussed next steps. There's a lot of information to consider, and the task force will meet again to consider all the ideas and discuss how these ideas could be implemented. We also received over a hundred ideas that the task force has come up with so far. We've had three sessions. We discussed going to a fourth session to consolidate these ideas. And the administration is in the process of consolidating these ideas because some are overlapping. And what we're looking for in our fourth session with the task force is to come up with five or ten initial solutions to some of our discussions or problems going forward with enrollment. And hopefully, out of that session, that information will come back to the task force, which will eventually come to the full board for further evaluation and discussion. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The negotiations committee, we met last week. Had the aggressive negotiations with the teachers, administrators, and food service. Our units. Yes. What? What did you have? The other committee.
That last week, we gave out the presentation that I shared in four A two there. We're going to field the questions on these processes or requisitions to coaches, teachers, or whatnot. Just to narrow that down as far as who asks who, asks who, or what. Just transparency purposes, we had talked about the state cap, where we stood with expenditures revenues.
What have been priorities?
So just, again, one of my priorities about making sure our kids are ready for college period life. So just kind of getting it out here early, maybe as well, because we have our readiness day in the high school of possibly getting paid as well. So there are, we had a meeting, local businesses, HR people who come to our schools. We had some interviews for possible jobs they actually have in our local businesses, as well as having some sessions with our kids on how to go to an interview, present yourself, and interview, resume, those types of things. And also career exploration, such like that. So we're excited to get this back in person again this year. List of some key local businesses and organizations that will provide some profits here as well. This is top kids, third graders. It's your residence process. And Cafe, please, I don't know if it's scary or not. There's no news, let's go ahead. All right. So the Cafe met last week.
Yeah, I have agenda, so if you have a better update than I do.
So Cafe, the bar was also a point where members at Cafe met. And they're discussing Excalibur, would be the small. Karen and I actually have a lot of folks, the wire have now, that's a possibility. Got crisis, yeah, so we're not going to say anything to see crisis. Where they have, that is a possibility, also, I guess, is. I know we are accepting applications right now for wall of honor dummies. That's on our websites, on the Facebook page, as well as places. We have Catholic lights, folks, a bobby. Consider for the wall of honor that dumped in that calendar. So remember last month, I presented a calendar and we're asking to take these off. So I get, so it's just the same calendar without, except without the whole. I think that's the board, excuse me, another discussion on that.
Thank you.
Uh, just for your information then, uh, number two, the 21 annual report is complete, so you've got a preview of that, all right, so that'll be sent out to our community here in the next couple of weeks. Actually, just to begin, uh, some of the, some of the highlights that took place, uh, last year, and also perky overhead in the future, as well, this is done in the last several years, already reports, so. A lot of good stuff, I thank the administrative team for providing the content for that report, uh, and all the stuff, the good things are going on in our buildings and across our district in the last year. County here, so. It's definitely a celebration, everything CA's been doing, circumstances. Uh, the next kick, I just want, just again, uh, briefly, um, just kind of reflecting us, uh, you know, today, yesterday, kind of this marked two years ago, when we all went from home, in New York State, as far as school districts go. And, you know, if you really think about it, you know, none of us thought we would, talking about it two years later, all right, if we all thought it was going to be a couple of weeks, we'd all be back to normal, you know, et cetera, et cetera. You know, nobody, I think, nobody wanted to bet on that, uh, you know, through how long this has been going on, in that regard. But I think we could all, I think we're very proud of how CA, you know, against somebody's words, where we weren't in our lexicon back then, pivot. Uh, we pivoted from in-person remote within two days, uh, of, of we did this, and kids were able to log in. Some of them had a couple, a couple, a day or two more to get that rolling, but, uh, to see their teachers and learning continue, we got CA for those last couple of months, uh, of 2020, uh, for that. And, you know, we were able to follow up with that graduation outside, if you remember, we did it in a shift pattern, we'd take, we'd have 10 kids at a time, come up, it just pulled us, two texts of the stage were left, and the next week, at least, we had some for those kids, kind of get their senior year pulled out from under them, uh, for that. So, uh, again, just, uh, you know, we get rolling like that in such quick times, is a, is certainly a, uh, reflection on our, our entire staff, our tech services staff at the time, our, our teaching staff, everybody, uh, for what we accomplished. And if you remember that spring too, uh, we were presenting, we were delivering meals every day, all right, to kids. Uh, we were checking in on kids, you know, once a week, every kid got, got a phone call from somebody, mostly our teacher aides assistants, uh, checking in on them, how things were going. I actually put in my interview to go through the staff, why didn't we keep that going, why didn't we stop? Right, um, so it's, it was happening here now, we have a phone call, so we said, why can't we continue to do that, uh, in our district? I can handle every kid, I'm giving them an adult to, to do that. Did it once before, but, you know, that was logistically harder, uh, to do, uh, so we, we can continue to pick that up again. So, and I think, you know, the community came together, there's a lot of, you know, positive in the situation, that was certainly not great, uh, for everybody. And that, I think, led us into the 20, 2021 school year, uh, we came back in person every day, uh, you know, for everybody who wanted to be here. For those kids whose families told us to keep them remote, well, most kids had access to the teachers every day as well, right? So there was none of this two days a week, or packets going home on a Monday, you had to send them back on Friday, you never even got to see your teachers, it was going out to some other districts across the state and the country. Uh, you know, but here, our kids had access to our teachers, and again, uh, if you have, if you pulled our teachers, uh, you know, September agreement that summer, nobody would have said, oh yeah, I'll be able to teach kids in my room, teach kids on a screen at the same time, or I would, I'll write here, I'll be a remote teacher. It wasn't because they just didn't think they had to keep always doing it, but they proved themselves that they, they are, and there really no surprise, uh, that they were able to do that, uh, and afford that. So they got better as the year went on, uh, and I know Mr. Palmer was exhausted every night doing that, uh, as a math teacher at that time, uh, but again, we persisted, uh, what was best for, for kids, and what was best for, for, so. It was a little hard work, it was exhausting, nobody's gonna deny that. But I think, I think we pleasantly surprised ourselves what we're capable of doing, which often times happens in a crisis, uh, you know, you a lot better things you do when you're forced to do things, like in other lives, believing yourself that. So, uh, so I think our efficacy has certainly grown as, as a district these last two years. I think we've done a lot of other silver lines that have come out of this pandemic, uh, as a school and as a district. I mentioned a few already, there's some structural changes that we've done, I think we certainly like to continue those things. Uh, I just think it's also, uh, you know, we should be able to believe in ourselves that if we really want to do something, we can, we certainly proved it in the last two years, for that. So, uh, so again, kudos to the, everybody here at CA, the board for their support, of everybody, uh, here, the families for their understanding and patience, uh, we tried to figure this out the last two years. I know, and, and certainly kudos to the parents, because a lot of them became teachers, right? You had jump faculty at home in your kitchens, you know, for those kids who were at home, you know, in the remote instruction, you had a window into, uh, what teachers are doing every day. Again, in our classroom, I think there's a, a new respect for what our faculty does on a day-to-day basis, uh, because of that, so. A lot of great memes came out of that as well, because of that. Um, so, uh, again, just thanks all around to everybody for, for, uh, sticking together and doing what we need to do, and we're here today, and I'm gonna thank them, say, hopefully we're not going to go through this again, but, uh, so hopefully we're, we're moving forward as far as the world pandemic goes. Uh, and we continue to get better every day, that's why we're here, to choose improvement. Everybody here is a learner, everybody can improve every day, and that's what we, all we continue to do, respect of ourselves and each other, good things are gonna come, so. So you have one forward here, I got 75th anniversary, so 2022 marks the 75th anniversary for Kixaki Athens as a central high school district. Uh, so back in 1947, they got together, uh, it was actually June, they had a vote, and they voted to centralize. And that same night, they elected the school board. You didn't think differently back then, so, uh, so they elected the first school board for CA, and then they progressed to, you know, we are, uh, we're there for that, and such. So I think we thought it would be nice to maybe do a couple, you know, to maybe plan some events, or at least some ways to just, you know, celebrate 75 years of the school district. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a central school district, and so it was, uh, out on the Facebook page, website, people were interested, being on a, it won't be a big commitment, if somebody wants to get together once or twice, just come up with ideas on how we might celebrate our, our diamond anniversary. Sign up for that, or just call the district office, and we want to as well. So we'll do some things this spring, and next fall as well, I'll be in the school, and hopefully we can, it's a milestone, right, this year. Reading the board minutes from the 1940s, some things haven't changed, some things have, and some things haven't changed. So if anybody's interested, wanna come in, load the dust off the board minutes from the 40s and 50s, a lot of them come in, and then read them. There's a tidbit, I think, if I may, uh, the school district used to own the Quay Park, but it's now a Quay Park, that used to be school district property. That was where they played, that was their sports fields and athletic, where they walk over from the school, you know, it's now the apartments, walk over there, have the zeitgeist and stuff. So that was like early 60s, it's, it's older. It's a whole scam behind that, I think it's a scam, but just saying, uh, part of it was property as well. So, and in the first vote for where to put the new central high school, it was gonna be on that property. That was when they put out the first vote, it was gonna be on that property. And they eventually were able to, uh, after, well, it passed, but didn't pass by enough votes, it's back then, you needed like a super majority to do a Capitol Hill project. So, you know, it passed, they didn't have enough yes votes, they had to go out a couple more times, by then, they were able to, uh, they could pay for it, but they were able to get the property around that, so. The other choice between that was for my appointment, that was some choices they had, the original vote, of a mansion or a, a school, for my appointment, it's about, or for 85. That didn't happen. Uh, just, just as, uh, FYI, it's tech, uh, it's Tech Department or Tech Services Appreciation Month, you know, every month we, uh, highlight, uh, one of our departments or units in our districts, so Tech Services, uh, Appreciation Month for them, and I think we all, uh, see it right here, what they do for us, setting this up every month, but everything they do behind the scenes to make sure everything is running, uh, efficiently and effectively for our classes, our students and teachers. This year, it's certainly, it's a huge improvement, it's probably good, it's been better, uh, this year as far as responsiveness and customer service, uh, in that regard, so. Hats off to Nicole, her whole team, I know she prefers to recognize her whole team, uh, you know, it was like, here she has been a wonderful, uh, every, talk to anybody here, they're all very, they feel very, uh, things get responded to much quickly, uh, quicker. So always change. Uh, just again, it was on last month, I just wanted to leave it up, just for information, uh, this 2030 destination, next steps, timeline, we have that information. Uh, and then finally, all the updates, just first, the state head side, uh, pre, testing is going on this spring, so the three-day test is going on as scheduled, as well as the region's exams are going on, June is scheduled uh, for students, uh, for that, so that's, is what it is at this point. Such, and I haven't said that they're gonna have any type of, whether they're gonna count toward graduation or not, assuming they will. See, right now, we think counts, so to speak. As well as bloggers, so bloggers. Uh, they are still piloting computerized assessments, at least we'll be doing that three-eight, with three testing on computers. Where that's headed, I think that's where, what, like SATs, uh, ACTs, some other tests, AATs, national tests are also going computerized, so. Matter of fact, the state is there as well. For that, they also, thankfully, changed some of the certifications, they're updating, and they're pointing back to where they were, right, to the re-state K-12 special ed certification. Red meat for that, everybody still cheers for that one, because it's extremely difficult for high, special ed teachers in secondary, because it's just not out there. Or you have some different schools, there's more flexibility in assignments, and also the teacher, the basic, like, they get the teacher K-12, so there's seven twelve releases for that, so. Some other certification updates. The state head is, their, their main focus is customer service, bringing back the model, the customer service model, which they were 20 years ago. So we have, so regulatory, we want to make sure that we're responsible, customer service oriented, uh, so we were managing Robert Jim Oliver, who used to be the district superintendent of the question, our three votes, he's, he's the deputy commissioner, charged with that. Charged with, that was the only reason he decided to come back, is he could take that, truly a customer service, uh, but. So I hope, hopefully he's successful with that, hopefully. Oh, pardon me. So parking on the Kixaki campus. Principles like Kixaki campus, just smack, so, um, it, it's, it's, it's just, it's rough, let's put it that way, like, this is popular nose, because she wears a bright orange vest and flashing light on her head, so she could hit the parking lot, which picks her kids up, like, exaggerated, but I think she's
I should, I should, but I don't.
Yeah, I know she does, so, uh, we all laugh at Ted for wearing that, and I know why, um, you know, in that regard, it's just, uh, there's definitely, I think, a, you know, there's an increased amount of parent transport going, just across the board. I don't have it right in front of me, but I want to say, oh, it's about 50% being transported, for all reasons. So, in particular, it's the dismissal time for the second dismissal, because you have a lot of middle school kids also need that time to stay for office hours. And everybody seems to want to park and pick up in front of the district office, smallest lot there, so. Uh, so we've talked about some different options, everything from, like, truly assigning parking spots for our staff, and kind of, everybody's gonna force them over, around the back, and such like that. To another thing that I've talked to Ted about, we're gonna try putting the buses in front of the high schools, instead of the bus loop, they're called the bus loop, that, and how they pick up. So we're gonna see if we can get all the buses over there in front of the high school, uh, Mrs. Miller, of course, I've got, that's a, that's a big plan, her, her crew, uh, walk, walk out, they have the whole, yeah, but. So we're looking at different options, we're gonna try, try a couple of options this spring, once the weather's warming up, you know, bring everybody back, uh, those issues, we'll see if we can deviate some of the congestion going on in front of the district office. Yeah. We'll say, those of you who were here, when we, you remember, we went through like, what, 13 different iterations in front of that campus, as far as what it looked like, and gone and done. Uh, we, we didn't take away parking spots, I know some people say, there's still many, not a few extra parking spots that were there before, uh, for, because, so. So we're gonna see what happens with that, with the buses in front of the high school, uh, for for pickup, because drop off isn't quite as bad, so, you know, so drop off is remaining in the bus loop, maybe the, that second pickup would be in front of the high school. There's other things, I think I didn't use the word force, but to make sure, like, make the middle school pick up in the back, but the issue there is, you have parents who have a seventh grader and a third grader, you know, and that, it'd be like two stops to pick up their kids, that, that's necessarily worth as well, so. Uh, so we're gonna try a couple of things out, and see what we can, see what happens on that, but we are aware, we are trying to address it, uh, trying to keep it safe, really, just get it out of there.
And I think, Randy, when we designed the front, when we revised the parking area on that building project a number of years ago, I think that was one of the intents back then, was to have the buses in front of the high school, to utilize that space for, um, buses.
That was one of the options we looked at, yep, right, yep, that's one.
So I think that may, may be our advantage to.
If we, if we ever do that, we could actually add more parking spots in the bus loop. You know, because right now, we don't have that in there to get the buses, you know, slide swings, it's, you know.
It's really the first time I've thought of it, and, you know, hearing you, I, I just, I do have a worry about, I don't know what the plan is, of the, of the three kids going to the high school, and our buses, is that a
Well, they need to be walked, right?
But they need to walk, I guess.
So.
Yep, I had a, that's not the good.
The distance that most of the, most of the school kids.
Do the, but is there a lot of bus runs where there's high schoolers on elementary buses?
Well, that, that's the, about 3:30, 3:30 buses, uh, not a lot of high schoolers, it's mostly middle school kids who are getting out at that time, uh, that are staying for that office hours, and, you know, the entire, anybody riding the bus on elementary, they have to ride, so. No, I, we're, that's, that's, that's the idea, we're just, we can control, at least we can control if kids walking in the, in the schools or buses, it's, it's, it's that's a control, and it's helpless with that, so, people out, you know, driving around in a parking lot.
Is there a need for any additional staff during that time to be out front on the sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes, but I don't think we can put them in a position to be like traffic lights.
Yeah.
Can, is, is there, then, do we look at, and I say this hiring, budgeting, for additional uh, folks to help us with our, our safety issues out there?
That's another option.
I mean, no, I just was, because we're gonna talk about this in a little bit, but the SRO that we want to
Right.
Have on campus, so.
It's hard, because like, I, I, I do it every day, sadly, um, there, there's just so many cars that have to get their kids, and there's not enough space for all of those parents to get their kids, so it's, people are, you know, parking along the curb to be able to just have their kid coming to them, but then have the parents who are driving in the other, because there's two, two carwinds are stopping so that their kids can then get in, and so, and people are just not leaving the crosswalks. They're just crossing anywhere between the two crosswalks, and it's just, they don't look, they.
So our district does, um, my employed district does, um, a stagger release, so anybody that's being, as a walker or being picked up, they get out at a certain time, and then the bus kids are held a little bit, and then the buses come in after the pickup is gone, they're done. And that's the way it is at all the buildings, and so I don't know if that's something to look at, just have a stagger release.
But I would assume aides and assistants would be helping the teachers walk their students out, correct? I mean, one teacher probably can't handle all the kids coming over to the high school, even on the sidewalk, just to make sure they're sitting on the sidewalk.
And then someone has to be in the classroom too.
Well, then the teacher put in that aide and the assistant to him.
Well, right now, like they, they team up. So like Mrs. Capice takes out her class and another teacher's class and she goes to the walkover door. And then that other teacher takes those two classes and goes to the buses. So it's not typically like one teacher trying to do both, but it's really not a lot of the different grades I've seen with Abby getting released. That's what they, they kind of share that, which is really helpful. So they never left without a teacher. And there's usually an aide or assistant that tags along to go to the buses. They don't typically use that pair, I don't know, but. It's interesting these days, especially when it's cold out. We, I start walking as soon as it's nice, then I can't, I can't.
So Randy, on the Athens campus, that runs fairly well?
I heard, nobody's complaining about the Athens campus.
How many parking spots do you have over parent pickup? I think that makes a big difference.
We have, the way it works is they come around, they pull forward on a good day, and they get the child and they pull out. We do ask them to park the child across, and a lot of parents do that. But right now that is working really well as well as the, the buses. It used to be a mortal life, but after the reconfiguration of the parking lot, it's gotten a lot better.
Randy, I would just ask if, if any changes are being made to the dismissal times, if messages are sent home repeatedly? Just, because even if, if it's just walking from, to the other parking lot, it's going to push back the, the leave time for buses by five minutes, which will potentially spiral parents that are looking at their watches and wondering where their kids are, what's happening, so. Get ahead of that.
Give it time, give it idea.
He's going to have, he wants to see if we can do that first. So, so he's going to have the buses come back one day, because I could finish the run and it's all come back. Try it out, like hard, just make sure they're all. How far, just be back. Go your own height, yeah, it's there. See if it works. We're trying to think, trying to, you know, figure it out. Yeah, wait, you're, yeah, sorry, I got to do different stuff. We're going to talk, probably talk first, do a little bit about. It's like no pressure, like kids won't come in on five minutes.
Is it possible that we can hear what the plan is before, oh yeah, gets, got them in there, yeah, okay. Just have visions, or can six it all? Anybody? Leadership team, information ethics, Dr. Boer.
I sent you, so you should have it in your packet. So for the first time, and we've been working on this for a while, we're hoping to be able to put the fast bridge reports in the portal like we do with the state assessments, but we have not been able to get those two technology pieces to talk to each other. So we went old fashioned and we backpacked home the fast bridge reports so that parents could see them. It's something we talked about a lot at the middle school, because the feeling was we have a certain group of kids at the middle school who maybe aren't taking it as seriously as they would if they knew their parents would see how they did on. So we're hoping that that's helpful. So we had to send a lot of information home along with it, just to help parents kind of understand what they're, what they're saying. I also want to let you know that along with that, after we gave the fast bridge up in January, we met as grade levels, so from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade, to look at the results and talk about not only our celebrations, because we had lots of places where our kids made terrific growth and we're very excited and the teachers still deserve a lot of credit for that. But we also did notice that there were definite curriculum gaps. There were specific skills that seemed to be problematic across the entire grade level. So that was an opportunity for us to get together and really start having a conversation about what are some of the things we need to infuse into our curriculum that either the kids missed because of COVID or is possibly just something that our curriculum just isn't covering well enough for the kids? So it seems to be something that they're not as strong in as they should be. So with that, we had conversations about what to do for the remainder of this year. We also are having, and I started this last spring, we had an ELA panel and a math panel get together to look at what we're doing curriculum wise, intervention wise, in those two areas, look over our data, see how we're doing. So these meetings are now continuing, again, with that concentration on looking at our curriculum as a whole. Is it getting us what we need from our kids? Know that through the links, reports, you are seeing if our students reading at or above grade level is not where we would like it to be. So we have to take a look and say, okay, curriculum wise, is it something that we need to supplement what we're currently doing? Do we need to look at a new program? So that ELA panel is gathering information from teachers and then we're going to start having a conversation about what we want to do in terms of our curriculum as a whole. The math panel, though we convened in May, because at the elementary school, the teachers teach both and so they wanted the opportunity to be on both committees, but not have to be with me, to us. So we, we said we'd work on one and then we'll work on the other one. I also gave you a at-risk seniors update. So if you notice, we did unfortunately have six students have dropped out already from the 2018 cohort. I gave you information about those students. We always continue to reach out to the students and try and see if they'll come back and try and see if there's any possible way to make them a schedule that they would want to at least finish out high school with us. So we will continue to do that, but I wanted to let you know what the information was on those six students. Currently, in our senior class, we have four students that the staff is concerned about. So for those students, they're met with regularly. There is a plan for each one of those students. Everyone's clear on what it is that they need in order to graduate. One of the students is just looking to graduate early, so that student needs to pass everything. So she's really, she's an at-risk, because she needs to pass everything, and she's not an at-risk, because she is trying to graduate early, but she is getting hot athletics. So we're very hopeful that all four of those will make it and maybe possibly we'll get one or two of the six that dropped out back, but. And then the last update, so I know that you got an invitation from Dr. Mercer, but this past week, we've been doing restorative practices training. And Lori DiCarlo is here, so she can weigh, she's actually our trainer for that. So we've had both staff and students, and these are the people that want to be basically our restorative practices in rooms. They're our go-to people, so they're getting some nice in-depth training about how to make sure that we're implementing it as well as possible for our students. That's our update.
Couple of questions on the at-risk students piece. Appreciate the rundown, the summary, which we're, but I wonder, when, when somebody is at-risk, I assume that everybody on that team knows they're at-risk. And there is like a plan, a place that everybody on that team. How do you mean that?
Yes, so there's at-risk meetings specifically, they're kind of run similar. We own IST at the, at the lower levels. But yes, the whole team, all those students, teachers, know what they need in order to graduate, what they need to do. And they're discussed, right, the location of the track.
Maybe, but the contact person, there's some one person.
Yes, yes. So for some of them, it is stool counselor. For some of them, they're IP students, so it would be their case manager. And then I do believe for the one student, it isn't the teacher that does, who just has a question. Now, Mr. Burrow, I'm sure is in contact with all four of them on a regular basis?
Sure, I'm listening to it. So we need, once we need to talk with the grade level teams a lot. And so those seniors that are at-risk are talking about on a weekly basis, so where they're located. So they are talking about.
And the summary, interesting, that you have this, but there was like a lot of emails sent or many phone calls were made. Well, is there a, is a documentation of who's doing what? That you could go back and say, this is the list of things that we've tried?
Yes, there's actually, and it's in eSchool, so all the complaints that we can make about eSchool, it does have a place in there where you can write all your contacts home, different meetings and things like that. So that is to coordinate.
I have a question, how, I'm sorry, are we going to talk?
No.
Okay.
Still, I'm listening.
Well, I'm just like, how far back do we watch these students? Like, was this student an at-risk student? Are these students like kindergarten on, or are we just? High school on, and like how far?
Yeah, it, it kind of switches, so down at the elementary, you'll have the IST process to just look at them in terms of struggling to meet grade level expectations. And when they get up to the high school, but the middle schools are in specific at-risk meetings as well, but at the high school, it kind of switches over specifically to at-risk. And then you start talking about them heavily at the end of ninth grade, because one of the biggest predictors of the kids who are going to end up on, on this list is if they fail classes in ninth grade. Because once they start getting behind in their credits, then you're having to have a makeup thing. So Apex has been terrific there. So at the end of ninth grade, like a lot of times when we use over the summer, those are the kids that we're going to put on an Apex thing. So we really start having a pretty good idea of who we want to keep a close eye on at the end of ninth grade and how to support them to make sure if they've missed a credit, how they can get it back. We were very excited when regences were optional, because for a lot of these kids, it is a regents exam that they have to pass, and that's one thing. We can't, I don't want to say we can't control it at all, because obviously we need to use the material to help them pass it. But, you know, passing a class is something that we, we feel a little bit more confident in, in terms of being secure that we can get students to pass a class. But I would say at the end of ninth grade is when we really start ratcheting down on, okay, these are the kids we really need to keep a close eye on. And the counselors are, are very good at that, and I know Bill just started this year, but I know he's great at it too.
And Dr. Mercer was terrific last year.
I would add, we're ninth graders, we're the ninth graders for many, many years of this year, but we know the ninth grader team, that we switch to ninth graders. We look a lot more, we know Violet, who's getting in January. More of their contact, you know, they know that those students are particularly, so we know more to do a lot of intervention for, have set up for our ninth graders prior to ninth grade.
So Carrie, here's my question, you may, you may, this may have been answered already in some responses, but how have we advanced over the last five years in our strategy in dealing with at-risk kids?
I think we've gotten much more clear and targeted in our meetings to be very specific as to knowing who they are, knowing who they are quickly and making clearer plans to intervene. I think we're doing a great job with using Apex, both over summer and during the school year, for credit recovery for kids who are struggling with that. I think there's also been a lot of work on the district's part in terms of reaching out to families and students after they drop out. I think one of the things that we missed the boat on early on, when I, when I first started here, we didn't do as much when a student dropped out. It was, we, we felt bad, but we kind of felt like that they made that choice and not that we were ready to offer them, we just didn't feel like they would want us to come to the house and encourage them to come back. And then we tried that, that was probably, I'd say that was about six years ago. We started doing some visits at home and calling them and seeing if they would come back. And, and we've had some good success getting kids to come back and to, to try. We've also really, and this is one of the things I know we're talking about with budget, so, so we'll take a look at it, but talking about that flex program, really taking a look at the learning styles and the learning needs of certain of our students who are at risk, who a whole day doesn't really work for. A lot of these kids do have a job, the ones that unfortunately lose to dropping out because they start making a little bit of money in a job and then they think they don't need to have the high school diploma because they're, they're all set, that they don't realize all the other ramifications. They're all set because they're still living at home with their parents. So how we can be flexible with students who want to have a job, need to have a job because they're helping out family. So I think we're starting to really wrap our minds around how best to address the needs for students in a little bit more creative a fashion. I'd also say, and I know Alyssa's here, but also hats off to both Alyssa and Katie. They've done a lot of work with internships and I think as we build that too, that makes the kids be more excited and see more of a purpose in finishing high school. So, you know, I, I think we've gotten more targeted and more deliberative in our approach.
As you know, my favorite topic is mentoring. So I'm probably expecting that to come up. But is, is there a need to ratchet that up? And, and I know there's probably some concepts of that being implemented already, but is, do you need to ratchet that up a little bit for these at-risk kids?
I, I would agree that we do, and I know we're, we're talking about advisory and they have started the conversation about our, the program with high school students mentoring our middle school students. I think that's a great way to start, because that starts getting kids excited about finishing. But yes, there's definitely more work that can be done in that area. I think right now for the at, at-risk kids, the ones who get on this list that we're very concerned about and we're on top of, I think a lot of them informally get connected with someone, but I think we could definitely ratchet that up and have a more solid program. And I know Bill has some great ideas and the Dr. Mercer has some great ideas, so hopefully that we'll have something solid in place for September. Thank you.
Can you speak to, like, between grades and between like middle school, high school, how do, what's that look like to, once this at-risk child is seen as at-risk? How do we make sure that that information travels?
Well, the kids who are in, so even when you look at, I, I would start down at the elementary school. Fourth grade, the kids, when they come up to the middle school, there's, all those IST notes are held together, so they're in, they're all electronics, they're in a folder, so that is shared with, Dr. Mercer, with you. So, and the counselors in the middle school. So they get all those, they're available for the classroom teachers to take a look at as well. Then on top of that, we have meetings. The fourth grade teachers get to meet with the fifth grade teachers to do a little like, you know, oh, you gotta worry about Kyle, you know, you really gotta worry about Nicole, so on and so forth, type of things. So there's those two ways that the information gets there before the, the child starts. And then from grade to grade, obviously, in the middle school and in the high school, the teachers talk to each other as needed and the counselors there. From the middle school to the high school, same concept, whether it's at-risk meeting that the student was at or an IST, those are available and, and sent up to the next year's teachers. But there's also, which I think is very important, it, it's great to take the notes, but I think it's important to give the opportunity for staff to talk to one another about all the things that they've tried, because usually what happens is, you know, you come to an at-risk meeting and there's like a page of, of things that have been tried. So you don't want to, some of the things you want to be trying, some of the things you want to say, okay, that was already attempted and that didn't work well. And I think we're just learning in terms of the restorative practices and the responsive classroom. It's just the biggest piece for ninety-nine percent of these kids is that connection and that feeling that school is a safe, warm environment and people want them there. So I think having that concept in mind and talk, and teachers being able to talk through what they've tried with a student that made them feel excited to come to school. And we talk about that across a grade level as well, because sometimes, you know, I might not be a particular student's favorite person, but Mr. Palmer would be. So what, so what is it that Mr. Palmer does? There are certain kids who like sarcasm, who like the joking kind of thing. There's other kids, if you're sarcastic, I know you're never sarcastic, if you're sarcastic with them, it shuts them down. So just having that awareness of, of what they're liking and the importance of making them, making them know that we missed, oh no, that's it. It was funny, we were just having a conversation the other day, just calling home when a kid's been out. There's a lot of these kids who have attendance issues, you know, been out for three, four days and calling home, be like, I missed you, not where are you, if you're gonna get in trouble. I missed you, you know, I haven't seen you, but just wanted to know how you're feeling and how you're doing. You know, not necessarily saying I'd like you to come back, just, I missed you. Because some of these kids don't get that a lot.
This is my name, something, Robert, I'm back. All right, so the first thing that I shared with you was a legal correspondence from our lawyers regarding the sleepy Halloween tax. was a legal correspondence from our lawyers regarding the sleepy Halloween tax surcharge. Uh, the part to highlight is that they are anticipating the assignment of a trial date for the matter in June. Um, that is because the judge wants to see the respective expert reports before scheduling, uh, either a settlement or a, uh, or conference. Any questions on that? Um, next thing is the Student Welfare and Health Services. You guys have seen a couple of these now. Um, these next two were for, kind of kills. We got one student attending Hawthorne Valley, and in North Bremish, we have one student attending the Salist two, Professor O'Sullivan. Okay, um, the next thing on there is the Federal Emergency Connectivity Fund, ECF funds that I have talked about with you guys before. Uh, Nicole has collected 99 of the 100 Chromebooks.
I'm, we got 100.
We got the 100 for tonight, okay? Um, so what that means for us is, yes, we just got 100 Chromebooks, but we got those for $37,000, but $0 full cost. The grant covered the full cost of those particular devices. Uh, Nicole and I are meeting for the 100th time tomorrow to discuss the next steps of purchasing for iPads, MacBooks, laptops, and everything for our tech environment. Number four here, the RFP development for the drainage project, swale cleaning, and then nature trail improvements. Um, that was devised by Mike Petromali and Squire myself. And with that, we included the top, the updated Topographical Math. That was completed about a month ago. Okay, so that is now out, um, for this to come in. Number five, the RFP award that we'll see later on for approval for the reuse and recycling. Uh, County Waste gave us the best price, that is our recommendation. Um, they also passed out products for light whole there, there, twice, sorry, in our CD parking lot. Um, and then the next request for quotation was the gym equipment preventative maintenance and safety inspection, which was a like two awards to Babcock. They were the cheapest in that. Number seven on your list is my fault, that should not have been there. I think it copied from a boss, and we can ignore that completely. Number eight, the EJA art room insurance claim has been approved. We're working through it, it's just north of $28,500 during a day where school's not in session. Kick out the HAC unit, Steve, it became wet, uh, in there. And Mike Petromali and his team are forth tirelessly getting this done, so huge shout out to him and his team. Uh, and the, you know, workers within that unit who came in on a day where they were not expecting any work, so thank you very much to all of them for all their hard work. Finally, ornament petitions, reportment petitions, uh, have been picked up in the district office. They just need to contact Post Fifth Line Committee. Any questions?
The budget vote this year, can they, last year did they vote because of COVID, vote by mail? No. Year before.
No. $20,000.
That's all, that's all.
Oh, this person, I think it's gonna be a fantastic email, I think it's happening every year. I just, I just want to piggyback on the, uh, work out of the deals and stuff that they can develop. Uh, I said, the conversation today, the question for the post, you know, they have to have me with a program. We'll just talk, so they are ready to make this work. So, um, we're gonna have like a previous project meeting, what I call that, next week or two. Uh, they might have supplies, it's kind of our 20 persons here. Uh, so the plan right now is that they're gonna have the kids come here for a full day, like two days in a row. So let's say the juniors and the children are gonna come two days in a row and be working out there. The next two days, the seniors will be, you know, full practice. They've already been working on, and, and, and class, Carol's school. Got the plans and finding out their, um, work, schedule and stuff like that. Uh, so they, they hope this is like, uh, we're piloting this thing, or maybe every year they can, well, like, the school has some work to be done. We've invested different schools, we're piloting this, so, uh, planning is gonna be cool. Uh, they have the students in that program, including EJA kids, right? Down in support of nature trail and such like that, so. Also, shout out to Scarlett here, who's, you know, some woodchips for free. Central Hudson sold out, as well, improvements of that for nature trail. There's a lot of new things, Miller had her kids out there snowshoeing a couple of weeks ago, so.
Okay, when we talk about the Native American science, you know, nature trail.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna piggyback on the social studies part of the course, for example. Up, up, it's an April meeting, or exactly, it's a social studies couple, and piggyback, that's a half.
Any questions for Mr. Palmer? I suppose on the director's updates, if you'd like to go in order. This is Miller. This is Miller, can you go first or? I'll come to you. I come to the podium, Mrs. Miller.
Oh, I have to come to the podium. People at home, I can hear you. So, um, since the release of some of our protocols have a lot to celebrate, we've been able to have our art show and our music concert and, um, snowshoeing. I know that you saw that in one of my updates. But ob- obviously, there's a lot of things that was already said. Um, the big thing is having the carpet back. It's truly amazing to see kids getting on carpet and, thank you, Mr. Palmer. And I'm very impressed that you went through nine items in less than three minutes. That's impressive, I thought I had an hour to really think about what I was going to say. But, anyway, um, they're doing a lot of, uh, transitioning between in-person and, um, uh, hybrid meetings, um, with our staff. So those are great opportunities for our teachers to be back together in the same room. They're already planning for things like our field days and our, um, June events. So it's just very exciting to get into spring and to just spring forward with some of these ideas that we want to get back to some of the, um, in-person events that we've had. So those are some areas to celebrate, uh, in the discussions that are going on, with some of those meetings, with the teachers back together in the same room. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just piggybacking on some of the stuff that Ms. Miller had said. Um, the school has just a whole different vibe now that we are, we have our masks and we have our desks together, and kids are, uh, really enjoying it. It's just a whole different feel. Um, this time last month, uh, I was talking to you, uh, we were doing a heart healthy challenge, and our students participated in a lot of different, uh, activities to become more aware of our healthy options, uh, choices. They raised over a thousand dollars. Uh, it also has kind of sparked some of, some friendly competitions uh, between our boys and our trails running club, uh, which they are really persevering to run about three miles, uh, before they weren't able to do that. And I think they're gonna be ready for the, uh, PTO 5K that's gonna be coming up, uh, May 14. Pretty, pretty good stuff, and, uh, like I said, we're really happy to have these back together.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Dr. Mercer.
I'm not, I'm not wearing my crazy headbands, because I feel a bit professional. Uh, today was, uh, at the middle school, we ran a spirit week this week, because why not? It's March, um, and today was green and gold day, and there was a competition every day. So yesterday, I apologize for all the parents whose kids came home with mustaches drawn on them, because that was, you know, wear a mustache. Um, so St. Patrick's Day was green and gold day, a lot of fun. Uh, the leprechaun, a leprechaun visited fifth grade, uh, so it was very exciting. Like, visited overnight, we don't know, nobody set any traps, so nobody caught it. Um, we have, our fifth and sixth grade teachers worked together to come up with an incentive for IXL and re-lets math, uh, so the kids could make better use of study hall time, um, academic time, you know, the kids who don't have anything to do. And, uh, kids are taking it pretty seriously because they're gonna earn a prize, if they're possibly going to earn a prize. Um, I agree with Jim and Karen, and I suspect Bill will say the same today. It's very nice to see kids' faces. Um, unfortunately, you know, for me, like, there are some students that, like, oh, that toucher face looks like, you know, I knew their eyes, and now I see the whole face. Um, and just like I predicted, there are some kids who, when they see me, they pull up a phantom mask, because, you know, I, I was always reminding them to pull up their mask. Uh, but it is, it's very nice to see their faces. Yesterday, we got to do outside recess, which was also fantastic, uh, because they're going nuts in the gym, it's a long time. It was beautiful yesterday, it rained today. Um, but the highlight this week really was that restorative practices training, and I want to just give a shout out to our students, Geddy Williams, Natalie Miller, Lasseli Segura, Juliana Coringi, Violet Jarnaba, and Joe Garland. All joined with 14, 14 adults. Um, they each sat in mixed groups with adults, um, and sat through three days of professional development, and they were taking notes, and they participated, and they participated in circles, and, uh, I, honestly, I can't imagine, you know, the, the bravery it takes for a, a seventh or eighth grader to sit in a mixed circle with teachers and talk about, we talked about empathy, we talked about school culture, we talked about all kinds of things. Um, at one point this afternoon, they did a, uh, you know, demonstration, tier three circle, and Joe Garland was, you know, Don, Don Essex's dad, you know, and, and, and he's role-playing, and he's, he's like, and, uh, you know, I'm Mrs. Essex's dad, I mean, Don's dad, you know? So it was, it was very, it was very cool, and having the students there was so inspiring. Um, they really, they got it, and I think they, they really are, and the adults who were there really, really obviously buy in and care deeply, but the kids got to see what we're trying to build. It was really, really magical, and, you know, I do have to thank Lori, because she, she is an amazing trainer, and she brought that mixed group together, even, you know, even though some people wanted to be in and out because of IEP meetings and, you know, middle school drama and whatever else was going on. She did a phenomenal job, and I think I am very excited to see this move forward with this fantastic group of people.
Is there anything, Lauren, is there anything you'd want to add?
Well.
We're down to spot.
Yeah, I did bring, um, Kathy of the handouts that I thought the board might be interested in. Um, the training was very engaging, and I really, this is, I work with about eight different districts, um, many of them in New York State. This is the first school that ever included student leaders in the training. And I think that they're really on to something, because I think the students will lead in a way that adults, you know, can't. So it was a real privilege, and you have a lot to be proud of. Um, it was a really wonderful experience this weekend, only the beginning, really. There will be monthly meetings to follow this.
Thank you. All right, Bill. Anything you'd like to add?
Uh, well, we caught the leprechaun at the high school, so we think it is.
Okay.
And I think we need to set a timer for Dr. Mercer. Um, a couple things, uh, I told all the sports related, it seems like this, this, uh, month. Congratulations to Coach Palmer and the wrestling team. They took home the sectional championship. They also had one from state qualifier. Um, didn't fare too well, but seventh grader got there and bright future after that program. Um, the other one is volleyball. Our, our boys volleyball team was a regional runner-up. They won sectional, so I was at the game, those crazy, crazy games. Um, they won in a five-set thriller and then lost in a five-set thriller in the region. But congratulations to both those teams, and what we got?
I also had the restorative practices training on my update, but all adds up. So we, um, started our student support middle school newsletter, Parents and Guardians, past month. Um, it looked like there's almost 300 views so far, um, and the fact there's some of the updates on that side are a part of that, and it just gives, um, parents and guardians an insight of, like, the different at-scale lessons that are going through, um, getting in March. Then this month, we are integrating circles for coping amongst the middle school students. So Dr. First, she'll take them in for the sixth grade, but Dr. Danny and myself, she's going into eighth grade and talking about coping strategies and have a better advantage for stress, pressures of, of, of state exams in middle school. Our star tutoring program for students has increased, uh, four kids are in place now. Last month, there was only three, so we have an increase in that. There's been community circles in the seventh grade by weekly, um, by Dr. First, Dr. Fanning, and her interns have been going through just to build up a culture of care. And that was like in the seventh grade, it's actually the path of, 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 of caterers. So bringing back community back is something really. So the counties, county jury and myself have started, or beginning, have started a connect club, and that's also the parent letter where parents did sign up their kids. Um, middle schoolers could sign up, and we have so far eight that have signed up from fifth, eighth, ninth grade. We're looking just to help them with decision-making and coping, just self-care and just have a good time and connect back, maybe, to, to, for the kids in the next year. And that, oh, I want to do a shout out at school, because I kind of know, but, um, Angela and Jess want to share that they have begun the course selection process. Um, they've done tenth grader ready and ninth and eleventh graders are busy on the teacher. And they start large, large group, and then they be individual students in the council, um, hear from the counselor's students, make them in for their meeting.
That's what we say, that she is. E.T. good interview, but she's not back, Palmer.
Thank you.
Good evening, as Mr. Squire said, it's Tech Services Month. Um, I'm so proud to lead the team that we have here at C.A. They're kind, caring, giving, and incredibly talented people. Um, sometimes we lose them, um, to go on to better things. Uh, but we hope that we've provided skills that they can use, that they can use if they choose to move over into other places. But we're just incredibly grateful to be here. Um, customer service, prompt service is our number one thing that we are dedicating to, that, uh, both with students, parents, and most teachers. So, and we're also, uh, we've been involved, uh, both Frank and Ellie, in, um, creating videos. Uh, we've had a lot of videos done in classroom, very, very exciting for us. So we're really pleased with that effort. Um, the instructional tech plan is in the final draft. Um, the district, uh, tech team, as well as just our tech services, but also, um, the, the tech team has been reviewing it and providing input along with leadership as well. So we're excited that that's towards its final phase, it's not submitted yet, they're still reviewing prompts. And last but not least, um, a couple of us went to cybersecurity training with NAREC. The FBI was there, the state police were there, we have another follow-up meeting next week. Um, and we were able to obtain some documents to help guide our practice for incident response. So things like ransomware, um, just monitoring any type of cyber incidents. Um, today was not it, it was a Hudson cable issue and not a district issue. Um, but otherwise, we were really excited to go to that and continue our progress.
Thank you all. Just some of the correspondence to the, or, that's where it passes. Just to, you see, and this.
Yeah, just, um, in regards to Lisa, she, uh, works on the ladder, so, uh, just finding myself, Ryan and Carrie, uh, met her last week, and just had, shared her thoughts about patients, she's a state trooper. So I saw, or meeting, Tom, right, and such, like, yeah. Right, you know, ideas, it's there. Always ours, how, how, you know, this, you shape your life.
We have some kind of card and some candy that was shared from the, uh, CATA group. Thank you. Want to make a public comment? Any other comment? Superintendent's recommendations, policies.
So, uh, final reading for the purchasing policy and, uh, other policy is Title Nine and I could say at the price of our attorney, we just run away the first expected reading and it kind of catches off of what happens in what we're doing already, but I was actually read the policy, we're not, that, so it's just, I'll leave.
The motion of consent to approve those, so. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Your personnel members.
I was just asking the board if you're interested. Board is interested in approving the calendar today? Okay.
Is it on yet?
Not that.
Anyone want to weigh in on that? It's okay. Then, the motion approval for C, one, A, B, two, three, A and B and C. Four. And then later. Are we putting the calendar in for the motion to follow this?
No, I'll bring it to second.
We'll do it in the second part, question, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
From Ms. Frank. So, it's all there, just have to assume you all make, it's all here. Thanks for your service, you have a lot up there.
If you have any gains. Okay, business matters, the motion of consent for E, one, two, three, C, four, five, four, E, five, A, B, six, A, seven, A, eight, A, and then the calendar for that. So, any discussion? I think we're having a new templates that I noticed, is it, are they? These, are they? There's a lot of, I don't know if people call this.
Oh, these are for extra classroom activity.
Okay, the transfer in, transfer out of.
Yeah, these are.
Is that money in, transfer out? Is money coming in or what?
This is, this is all of the money in, money out of all of our student counts.
Okay.
So, for example, on the wrestling team.
Yeah, because I, I don't know. That, that's okay, so that's.
Do you want the phone? Yes, yes, okay.
I, I think we've seen those.
And we, just so it was very.
It just looked, yes, it looked different.
Looked cleaner.
Yes.
Maybe it's the, maybe it's, maybe it's template, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. No further public input? Maybe we are here that it is donations, we want to, yeah, so it's the motion to approve this. Superintendent's recommendations, donations, A. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. So, go around, the team of good news. Any good news?
I'm just, I'm excited, my daughter is happy, she's been seeing her classmates faces and she gets to sit like it, so it's been a really great transition at the elementary level where I know there, she came home that first day with fire, so she's calmed down a little bit, but she, she just is loving all of it, so she patiently waited, but she made it.
True.
And a lot of the kids are really, so very patient and made it to some normalcy.
Yeah, that was really great to hear all the updates from admin and hear about this new environment back. I was able to see the production last weekend, which was fabulous and I was able to stop the art show on the way here tonight, which was fabulous, so it's really great to see what we're doing in our art departments and.
It's great to see the crowd at the musical production, um, also, I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Kent for putting on the middle school tween I O contest, um, that's been a big favorite of mine throughout the years and I'm glad that I got to attend this year's show and, uh, it's always a great opportunity for kids to perform.
I heard you were missing male representation.
We need two more males to step up and participate and, but the woman, all the ladies stole the show.
Maybe a mentor? No.
I'll send that off to my side.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, just, it's, it's good again to see the kids that are involved in, you know, the success that the, the sports teams have, the, uh, musical we're having concerts again, where, you know, kids are here and they're doing and enjoying themselves, experiencing outside of school.
Again, thank you to the, all the, the kids and, um, people that were, that are working with our kids, I mean, I think everyone's doing the best they can do. I also wanna just, um, commend the parents who have been fighting on the outside for the rights of kids because I know that there's been some heated meetings here and we did our best to listen, but really, I think the government finally has listened. So, I know it's a lot and it was a very stressful couple of months for all of us, um, but I'm happy that we are resuming normalcy. And it's definitely, as a teacher of my, of my, like, it's just, it's so different, everybody is happy, there's like a huge weight that's lifted and I'm just really excited for what's to come.
Say, uh, first of all, thank you to Frank and Paul Buck and Sunny Alden, uh, but I, I got to go to parent teacher conferences this week and, and my daughter had to come with us, but she was so happy to show us the new layout of the classroom because they could sit in groups again and the, the energy and excitement just to show us the classroom and then, and meet with, uh, Ms. Bruzy, uh, was awesome. Get to meet her face to face and have an actual parent teacher conference with each other was, was great. Um, and then I also wanna thank, uh, this is Dr. Mercer and everyone with the restorative practices for, um, I just wanna say I'm very proud of my nephew Joey and, uh, and him being role-playing Mrs. Essex's dad is a very funny thing for me. Um, but I, I knew he was doing that and, and, um, our whole family is very proud that he got to do that and, um, very happy.
I think it's a combination of nice weather, loosening of the mandates, no masks, but I really like the enthusiasm of the administration today and it was, it was great to see.
I wanna thank the admin too, thank you parents for fighting for our kids, I mean, we all have them here and it's just so uplifting, our new normal is back, we're happy again.
Just echo what everybody said, I know I was thinking my, my granddaughter is in first grade and had never seen kids, teachers without masks until whatever, March first or something, so it's very different, she very willingly ditched the mask. So it's very nice, and I too wanna thank you to Lori for helping and Dr. Mercer and those that were involved in the restorative practices. I know you've been working, I've known you, on the culture of care and bringing, uh, those types of self-awareness to, to us here, I think you see the benefits and the decreasing numbers of referrals you might see, hopefully around bullying and that kind of thing, that kids are are able to, and especially in, in listening to kids in the program, I think is great too, because they will go to their peers that share that information and knowledge and experiences, so that's, well, and I, and I too feel that the energy has shifted and it's so much more positive in the great direction of us, thank you.
Also, Mr. Downey, congrats on your wife's retirement.
It was hard fought. Stuck in here. Yeah, she won. She said I have way too much time on my hands.
She wants to join me.
Give you the, two more, word count.
Go fast.
Right. So we have a future meeting, April seventh, budget workshop, C G, six o'clock, twelve, budget workshop. You have C E at six o'clock, April twenty-sixth will be a regular meeting, and O C's will be at six thirty, that E J A. Couple of our Tuesdays here, O C, twenty-sixth is.
It's Tuesday, it's very.
Are we trying to do a different day? Just.
Really quick, they have to have a, 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 or 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 a. Maybe that was another reason why.
Okay, so just the motion of going to break a session to review special minutes and updates around meetings and negotiations and such. So, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. We are done, everyone, thank you very much.